So we'll call the work session for the Oregon City Arts Commission on September 11th, 2025 to order. We'll start off with roll call.
Good evening, Daria Loy.
Here.
Emma Lugo.
Here.
Josh Planton.
Here.
Choir.
Here.
Rebecca Sera.
Yeah.
Amy Wilson.
Here.
And I know that Mayor McGriff is intending to join us in progress. Is Amanda Dexter on the line? Okay. Joyce LaMaster also RSVP'd that she would be here this evening. Miriam has an excuse absence.
Sounds good. Next then is adoption of the agenda. Anne, I spoke before the meeting. One thing that we're gonna remove from the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from August 21st. Just because at a work session, technically you're not supposed to be approving anything. So we'll move that to the next meeting to approve. Any other changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I do that all the time.
I second Amy's.
Okay. Amy, Choir, any objections? Nope, okay. So that approved. No minutes. I don't think we'll do public comments either. We don't have any comments anyway, so yeah. Okay, so that gets us right into our strategy discussion. So in the packet that Anne sent out, I'll just try and really quickly summarize it. But what we were intentionally trying to do in the worksheet within that was just kind of reemphasize some key things so we're all level set on what we're looking at. So we're gonna be identifying kind of our goals. And while we might not get everything exactly worded as we want it tonight, the goal is to really get the focus of those goals identified. Which ones do you really wanna try and achieve over the next five years? Okay, is that better? One of the things that we noted was that, you know, goals and objectives, how they differentiate each other. Goals are broad, long-term, desired purpose that the organization strives to achieve. There might not be a clear way to measure success of it. It's more of a general direction that we're trying to head. Objectives, on the other hand, are specific measurable, time-bound actions that will be measurable, that we can use to help define what those goals' success looks like. And then from there, we'll build out our strategy and tasks from that. So this tonight is really to achieve goals and then hopefully get to the point where we can start talking about objectives. And then we'll word spread things after we kind of decide our direction. The only other thing I would mention in kind of setting this up is that as the Oregon City Arts Commission, our primary responsibility would be to the citizens of Oregon City. And making sure that when we are talking about these things, we're looking at it from the perspective of public art for the citizens of Oregon City. While I will say that we should always try and strive to hit the greatest number and greatest impact in terms of helping out artists and others involved in the arts community. You know, our focus has to be around the community members. So just keep that in mind when we talk through some of these things. So with that, my intention is to go around the room and have everyone kind of talk about what were, what are some of their goals that they have kind of identified as being important. We'll categorize these. I'll share my screen here in a moment. And we'll start listing these out. And then as we, once we get done with that exercise, we'll go back and kind of categorize things and then decide if there's ones we wanna, as a group, focus on over the next five years. So, any questions before we begin? Any other comments before we begin? Okay, let me share my screen real quick. Does anyone want to go first?
You should. You should.
Could I make just one comment? I know at the start of our each commission year, we do do a priority exercise, but we've always kind of focused on like that coming year or that coming part of time. Even here in this room, we went through an exercise where we talked about some of our priorities. What I really appreciate what Josh is doing is he's looking at a five-year window. So not just the next 12 months, not just the next 24 months, but really what do we wanna do? And ultimately, what we're gonna do is bring this strategic plan to our city commission. So it's a bit of a bigger undertake than some of the other sort of goal exercises we've done as an arts commission before.
Thanks, Hannah. So, okay, I guess I can go first. So in terms of looking ahead for the next five years, the goals that I identified, there was three of them. The first one is stability. And by stability, I'm looking at it from a financial standpoint and from a procedural standpoint. I think getting ourselves in a position where we have a good footing, we have the right, you know, level of funding that we need to do good projects and programs for the arts in Oregon City is key. And then once we have those programs, we know, you know, our procedures are well documented so that we're efficient in our, in our method of reviewing those and getting those managed. The next one is education. I think that's a big one that we need to focus on for our, our community. Is getting the word out about what we do, why we do it, why is art important to citizens of Oregon City? And then, you know, kind of what is art? And kind of help, you know, give people more information on that. And then finally, the last thing is focusing on diversifying our assets. So right now, we have, you know, quite a bit of statues and arts in two distinct districts in Oregon City, but there's lots more areas, neighborhoods that don't have art in them. I would like to see us try and expand out to other neighborhoods, other areas geographically, but also showcase other varieties of art that we haven't really focused on. Not just two-dimensional, three-dimensional, but we talked before about music and dance and performance-based art. So things like that, that we haven't really been able to get too much into yet. I'd like to look at increasing those in Oregon City. So those are kind of my three top goals. And I'll write those out as someone else wants. If there's questions, we can maybe go at the end and go back through them. But if anyone wants to go next in running through their goals?
Josh, I think we had almost the exact same.
Okay.
The only thing that I would add is last year, there were a few of us that had started delving into the idea of a community art center here in Oregon City. And doing some sleuthing to see, you know, looking for spaces where that could happen and what the cost would be and what a business model could look like. So I would like to continue that work. I think that would be a real benefit to the community.
Okay. Amy, since you poked me, I'm gonna say you go next.
So yes, lots of overlap, including that one. And including yours. So citing art in other geographic locations, I think would be important. I'm a little daunted and maybe, oh, there she goes. About a community art center, because I feel like that is such a huge lift. I really support it and think it's pretty awesome, but oh boy, the things that we'd have to get in line before that could happen. So as an ultimate, is that a goal?
It's like a 10-year plan, right?
Yeah.
To start the work on it.
Working with artists. And I think this, when I was first here, we give them a lot of support in making their, we don't give them a lot of support in showing the art. So working with artists in the past, the big deal was, can you have an exhibition? Can you have something for them to show this off? So a community art center would be great. A baby step might be looking at other locations that, well, like this, for instance, that we could put on shows and have something available for people. And that would also include music. I worry a tad bit about performing arts because there's already a performing arts community here. And we should talk to them, just because, you know, the rep theater that's here and stuff like that. So, but we talked about, okay, so that's one. Sorry. I am not at my most articulate tonight. I personally thought that what we did with six-by-sixes, I mean, six-by-six show was the best of the best. Because we're trying to involve the community from all levels. From kids and people who aren't necessarily professional, all the way to professional. Open invitation, anybody can do it. Great show, great chance for people who are not professional artists to have an exhibition. It also educated people as to what we're about. You know, oh, this is what they're, we have one here? This is cool. This is amazing. So I, that would almost be my number one, that I wanna continue to do that level of work with more public shows. Working on connections is, I think, and I'm just following what you guys prompted. It's funny. Here's some things we think are important. What do you think's important? Oh, yeah, that, okay. So working on making connections in the community, that can only help. That can only be a really good thing. Along the lines of your stability, improving how we work with the city processes, communication, so that we get a little more stable on our feeding. Feeding, guys.
That's a word now.
Somebody's tired.
You're doing great.
Am I?
Just take a breath. Be sure to pause for a second and take a breath and then...
It's not the lack of oxygen.
It must feel like very warm in here with all the lights.
I don't know what it is. And so then, to mimic your thing too, more secure funding. I think we could go after other sources. I can't remember who, who attended that National Arts video where they showcased other cities and what they did. I know there was somebody else from here that did it, but there were a couple and...
Oh, Emma.
Oh, Emma.
Emma's raising her hand. Are you raising your hand, Emma, or are you saying you went to that?
I just had to make your voice.
She what?
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. So there are other, and you probably know all about this, because everybody is always fighting to try to identify, what are some little things that we can get?
And I went to that thing too.
Oh, then good. Okay. So one of the ones I loved was that they were gonna have a tax applied to professional sporting events that came. And we don't have that. I would love to go to Portland and pull a little tax off of that. But being creative along those lines, I know I, very early on, somebody was, we were talking about taxis. He says, well, you wanna tax the things you don't like. So you don't wanna, you know, put a burden on something that you do like. You're gonna try to find the things that like, oh yeah, they can cough up a little in Airbnb, even though they're not allowed here. They exist here. And it's not the hospitality tax that you guys rely on, but it might be something different. So looking at that for other creative ways that we might be able to tap some money. The end.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone want to go next?
Maybe on the bridge.
Oh, I think she, I think Emma said she didn't raise her hand, maybe. Emma, on the screen, it shows you have your hand raised. Did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I had my hand raised because you asked me to go next, so I would do.
Oh, okay. I apologize. I apologize. Go ahead, Emma.
Okay. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Is anybody, yes, we can hear you okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna list things that are priority for me. The very first one is definitely an art center. I think that Triads did a lot of really great work in helping us kind of form the basis of what we think an art center could be. And I just, I think we have to continue to work on that and hold that as a five-year goal. I think it's a really great goal. Number two for me would be for us to reinvigorate a percent for arts program. Percent for Arts is how we got most of the sculptures that are on 7th Street. When they did that street redesign about 18 or 19 years ago, that was the percent for arts program. And it's one of the biggest ways that we can really have a significant impact in our community by, by coupling percent for arts with new construction. Number three for me would be to create a lasting and meaningful relationship with the city council. Right now, we don't really have a solid relationship with the city commission. We've actually never met with them. And we're finally gonna do that this month, and that's great. Because we are an advisory committee to the city commission, so we should really have an established relationship with the commission. In line with having an established relationship with the city commission, we should also be the default organization that any arts project comes to for review and for feedback and for suggestions. So somehow establishing our reputation as the arts commission, as the place that you go to when you want to get feedback on arts projects that are happening in Oregon City would be really important to me. There's two more. Number, my second to last one is, I would like to diversify the arts commission. If we look at our bylaws, originally, the arts commission was supposed to have representatives of various arts organizations in the community. And what we have instead is really an overwhelming number of visual artists, which is great. Visual artists are artists too, but we need to get more representation from the performing arts, from the different places that it says in our bylaws that we wanna have representation from on our commission. And the very last one is, I'd like to move us away from the idea, I feel like we keep on coming back over and over again to this sense that we're sort of an arts organization rather than an advisory committee. And I would just like, I feel like that's the thing that has kind of been a weakness with us is we keep on defaulting to this idea that we're kind of like another arts organization, almost like Three Rovers or something like that. And somehow getting it into our institutional culture that we're an advisory commission to the city. So those are my items. Thank you.
Okay. Awesome. Choir, thank you. It said you wanted to go.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback off of one of Amy's talking about. We're talking about having connections. I think a good goal this year would be to have better connections and knowledge of and interaction with all the other arts organizations that are here in Oregon City and even surrounding. So I think that would really help us and help them.
Is that it?
That's all, yeah. Because everybody said everything.
Oh, good.
I just wanted to clarify.
Anyone wanna go next? I haven't heard from Rebecca, Joyce, and...
Rebecca says you want to go first.
Rebecca, go ahead.
Hi, Will. I'm so glad I wrote these out earlier because I have no brains right now. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna read them.
Welcome to the club.
I have four goals. One is rebalance and reimagine Oregon City's public art identity. Develop a more holistic narrative of Oregon City through a diverse contemporary and culturally expansive public art program. We need to evolve the city's narrative, moving beyond a narrow historical focus and reflecting the full richness of our community's heritage. Number two, activate a strategic, sustainable funding model. Develop long-term funding and resource partnerships, like what Emma said, the 1% for art, that support both program growth and public trust. Because financial stability is crucial for achieving our other goals and ensuring the commission's long-term viability. Number three, strengthen regional arts leadership and partnerships. I think Choir was just talking about this. Build robust relationships with neighboring art commissions and organizations to create a stronger, more connected regional arts ecosystem. Because collaboration enhances our resources, knowledge, and impact, ultimately benefiting the community. And my last one is to grow the commission's capacity as a strategic public voice. Position the OCAC as a visible, trustworthy cultural leader that advocates effectively for community-centered public art. Because a strong public voice is essential for building community support and trust in our mission.
Thank you. Okay, Daria or Joyce?
Okay.
Advertising was one of my first thoughts. I think Clackamas County Arts Alliance does a great job of getting their, their, their product out there and getting themselves known. So many people don't know who we are. Getting a better artist outreach for projects, how do we accomplish that? We need, I guess, more, I guess, more interaction with artists. Resources for commissioners. Maybe that has to do with our website. And of course, I think this was already mentioned, liaison with the city is a strength, but we need to, I guess, build that a little better. And I think immerse ourselves into the city a little better as an entity. And how do we work together with the city commissioners?
Okay.
My last.
You are last.
Well, I'm gonna piggyback on a number of points. So one is really piggybacking on the role of the arts commission within the broader context of the city and the community we're in. And so the way I wrote it down is identify and implement ways to ensure that the arts commission plays a well-recognized decision-making role within the city. Because I feel that there are many instances where decisions that relate to arts don't even include us. And I think it's because we don't really have any visibility, as everybody already mentioned. And so I think a good goal for the next three to five years is to reach that point where there's no question about who we are, what we do, and why people should come to us when it comes to certain topics related to all different facets of what art means. So that was one. And then there are a few points about cross-community work and collaboration. And the way I wrote it as a goal is co-lead at least one cross-city art program every three years. It's ambitious, but I think that that would be so enriching for us, you know, if we were to partner with neighboring city arts commission or similar type of organization and have the ambitious goal every three years, or whatever is the cadence that we think is doable, to co-lead a cross-city, right, a sister city art project, you know? It could be many things. It could be a music and dance festival. It could be many things, right? But I think that would be a nice way for us to grow as an organization, for the city to grow, and also for us to create a meaningful relationship with other arts institutions that surround us instead of being insular. Then another one that I wrote down is, again, it talks about, you know, it's related to some of the points. You know, I'd like us to become the one-stop destination. When you're in Oregon City or you're thinking to come to Oregon City and you're interested in the arts, whatever the arts are, you know, we should have, you know, our website, you know, in our capacity, we should be the one-stop destination to find out about all those things. Because right now, it's all over the shop and it's very hard to find out. But it would be great if someone could just go. Because that also not only would provide education for the communities, local as well as the one they want to visit us, but also it would really, so it would help them, but also it would help us in terms of credibility and knowledge, right? And kind of to establish, so it kind of interlinks, I think, in terms of establishing our role in the community. And then the last one is, I wrote it as, initiate, fund, and enable bold, contemporary public art that puts Oregon City on the Oregon tourism map as a contemporary art destination. A good example, you know, a city that does it very well is Le Clos Figo. Now, granted, Le Clos Figo has got a lot of money that we don't, right? But I think with some resourcefulness, creativity, and good work, we actually have the ability. And we've got an interesting geographic, geological composition in our city that I think is an asset. And so with creativity, I think we can really be smart and put really the city on the tourism map as a place to go because there is this cool stuff that happens there, right? And it can be performative arts, you know, it can be different kind of public art. It could be many things, but I think it would be really wonderful in five years from now if people were like, oh, we're gonna go to Oregon City because they have this amazing, cool XYZ art thing that is there permanently, happens once a year, whatever is the thing. You know, it can be many things in parallel. It doesn't have to be just one. But something that is contemporary, bold, and that puts us on the map has not been just another provincial town, but actually a city with a history, with heritage, amazing assets, right? They really want us to shine the way we think we deserve. And I think it's possible.
Sorry. I just wanted, I just wanna piggyback off of that because I think that in Oregon City, we have a rare opportunity because of our history and because of how old this place is. And even in indigenous history, this place was a huge, huge gathering spot. It was monumentally important to indigenous communities to meet here. This, we have always been a large gathering place. And I think that it would be really tight if we took the opportunity to be leaders in highlighting the indigenous culture and history of this place. Because like, we have, we have, we have a lovely amount of pioneer history and founder history and early 1800s and 1900s history. And, you know, there's, and this is personal to me because of my last art series, obviously, but I just think we have a really big opportunity to, if we are deciding on goals and how we want to move forward and deciding our identity and how we're communicating and all these things, to consider making it a goal in this next five years to become a leader in spotlighting indigenous art, indigenous culture, indigenous history. So.
I think I could not agree more. And I think like the city naturally has got so many overlaying, overlays that overlap. You know, there is the indigenous beautiful history, right, that is basically invisible right now, right? Then you have the pioneering, which is very visible. And then, but then you have like the local culture, there are kind of some interesting quirky things that happen in the city that are very unique to Oregon City, right? Then there is the geology, the way in which the city is physically built is an asset. Then you have the nature, you know, they've got this waterfall. I mean, there are so many different things, right, that makes a place special. And I think the arts within that, all different types of arts can really elevate, right? And I mean, to me, I've got maybe the double hat being in the, in the touring, the destination Oregon City thing, but to me, we've got such an amazing opportunity as an arts commission to really do that, right? To put us on the, on the map as like, well, I'm gonna go there because that place is amazing, right? And art can help us do that.
I think it would be great if we could partner with the Grand Ron Project. I think it would be great if we could partner with the Grand Ron Project. It would be wonderful.
I see Rebecca has her hand raised.
Yeah, I just, I was kinda looking through my notes. And above the goals, you had the SWOT list, you know, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And I realized that my opportunity is also a goal. And it kind of wiggles in between what everybody's been saying. But I have written, "Developing a comprehensive public art master plan in collaboration with the city and regional partners, so other cities like Westland, and arts organizations like Clackamas Arts Alliance, and the community, exploring new locations and projects for public art." During our strategic planning session in January, Emma and Darian, I talked about a potential sculpture garden along the promenade as kind of just a brainstorming idea. I really liked that a lot. I think it was Daria's suggestion. And so I think that would be something, even though I know we have sculpture and we definitely wanna get into other art forms, even digital, even, you know, video, there's all kinds of things, AR, there's all kinds of things that we also could explore. But being able, because nature is such a big feature in our city and region, actually having something like that where people could, it would be a destination for them to be outside and walk around and see these decorative pieces. And maybe some of them are permanent, and maybe some of them are temporary.
I know we're not, we're not making plans right now, but I would say too, like, in these goals, we're talking about diversifying. And we definitely need to think about performances and visual art and installations and things like that in other places in Oregon City also. And I was thinking like, I think, I think this, the heart of Oregon City, the downtown, the promenade, the McLaughlin neighborhood, the library, those are, that's a really walkable area. And it's like, really great to have ideas like, oh, we could put art here. A lot of the other areas of Oregon City are, when I drive around, there, it's like neighborhood after neighborhood after neighborhood, and it's like housing developments. And some are connected by a small, like, clump of like, corner stores or whatever. Really, it's, the biggest connection is Seventh Street turning into Malala and Beaver Creek. So, saying all that to say, I think, I think that's a challenge we can identify is how to get art not just focused in this heart area of Oregon City, but also in more of the outline. Honestly, this is a very small area. Oregon City is so much bigger. So, I'm just putting that out there, not poo-pooing on the promenade sculpture walk, that's pretty awesome. But I'm just adding, pointing, highlighting that, sorry.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, actually. One thing that I wanted to piggyback or build on, I think, to remember who mentioned this before, but anyway, one thing that I saw when I was traveling in August, I think it was Oslo, I don't remember where it was, but we went to a museum and to see art. And, but I thought that the way they did it there that day when we arrived was really fantastic because they put together visual arts and interactive visual art together with dance performance and live music. So when we arrived, I thought I was just going to museum to see art. And then when I got the ticket, they told me, okay, it's gonna start over there. And I didn't even know what was happening because I don't speak Norwegian. And so, but basically, to carry short, I was taken through this visual art exhibition through this dancer and live music that moved us from different floors of this building. And so, I'm saying this because I think sometimes we have conversation and narratives where it is this versus that, and that and this. But I think there are so many creative ways where you can put all the type of, you know, performative and visual, it doesn't matter, you can actually create situations where those things built on top of each other and elevate each other. It doesn't have to be this or that, it can be many things, right? And I think we should really think more, less in dichotomies and more in how can we bring value to variety of different type of arts community with things that leverage all those different facets. Like, I mean, I think that, you know, the, I wasn't here, but you know, the Festival of the Arts, and then there was, you know, music there. I mean, you can do these things, it's not impossible. And I think that is what we should try to do instead of doing like, you know, for instance, if we did the promenade or sculptures in Malala Avenue, wherever they are, but you can also have on a monthly event, performative artists that actually build on top of those sculptures, if they were sculptures, right? They could do so many cool things. It doesn't have to be aesthetic thing, it could become a hub, right? Like you have in Europe, public squares, we really don't have public squares here, but you can create those spaces by leveraging public art, right? And then you can create these events, right? That become more community-focused around those art pieces, right? And I think there are so many opportunities to do that in a very, in a way that is not too expensive, given our funding.
I, just in terms of timing, I wanna turn back to the, so we all went around and gave some goals, and the additional comments and stuff is great, I think, in getting in terms of, you know, the finer objectives we could tie to these. But I tried to on the fly, and people can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I tried to on the fly categorize some of these. So stability with the financial and procedurals and the percentage for the arts program, which is, I tie into kind of the financials, kind of put into one category. I then heard several people talk about, in different ways, partnerships and connecting to other groups, or establishing better, you know, relationships with other groups. That includes everything from city departments, city commission, other art organizations, other cities, and then also kind of like promoting those connections. The next one was better artist outreach. I guess this kind of goes in with promoting an advertisement as well, I guess, but education. I think this one was, I deleted that, I was supposed, oh no, diversify art commission. I think that actually, I'm gonna move down one. So, yeah, better artist outreach, education. Next one seemed to be a lot of comments on defining our role and maybe defining it for others. And so diversifying our art commission, focusing on building out the role and us as a strategic body for art in Oregon City. Focus on establishing a reputation as the art body, quintessential art party in Oregon City. Advertising our work and getting ourselves known, promoting our indigenous history and taking a leadership role in that.
I can almost put that down with the one below. Because on the one thing, we're establishing ourselves. And then her comment was that we take on an additional role of being leaders.
Well, I think, yeah, I think there was like, establishing our, like, our functional role. And then there was, like Rebecca was saying, like, let's, what is our art identity? Like, what are we, what are we focusing on? Like, so that was more, mine was like, what, like defining our art identity, like overarching directive of like, what we're trying to do.
Okay, so I kind of, I put that art leader up above, and then, yeah, moved it down there too. So that indigenous history, leadership role, along with art as a destiny, Oregon City as an art destination, and master plan. I guess diversity of art can be kind of tied with that master plan idea.
Yeah, put master plan at the top.
Okay. I didn't bring my mouse, so now it's harder than moving. And then we get into community centers. I heard several comments for that, community programs with direct engagement to artists and citizens, resources for art commissioners. I tie these all under resources, is kind of how I'm in capital, in thinking of this group here. Building out resources.
I'm not really sure what resources for arts commissioners means.
For arts commissioners, what is that?
Go to, what is that? We have questions about things, you know, documents and, you know. I don't, I know there was questions about, you know, creating documents. I personally don't wanna create a document, I just wanna find information. Where do I go to get this information?
So a more accessible website?
Yeah.
Okay, but for arts commissioner, for us, or for us? So not on the, not on the website?
So maybe that speaks a little bit to that Dropbox and online resource conversation?
Yeah. Rebecca, did you have your hand raised?
That's what I was just gonna say. I think she's talking about kind of the onboarding and also just supportive resource material for the arts commissioners to always be able to know where to go get it. So it was that part of that. And forgive me, Joyce, if I'm putting words in your mouth, but I think it goes back to that meeting where we were talking about, talking to Mike about having the, having the one drive.
I think that would go up in another category.
Not under resources? I kind of, I think of it as resources for community members, resources for artists, and resources for art commissioners.
Yeah, I think that works.
But maybe that's.
My mind is working differently.
Okay, where would you put it?
A plan for a community center is like a plan, it's not resources. Community programs like the six-by-six, those are projects. I don't see them as resources. Resources, I think, are more about defining ourselves, that might be up a little.
Well, so I was thinking community center, so that, that would be a resource for community members, right? So if we established one, it would fall under getting that established, and we could say we have now created a new resource for citizens of Oregon City. The plan for was just because we mentioned that that might not be a five-year goal, that might be a 10-year, but what's the foundation we can lay now to achieve that? But I, to your point, yeah, so let's, resources for arts commissioners, I will.
What's further up? That I don't remember anymore. There you go. You're doing great, Josh.
Yeah, he is, it's amazing.
I mean, we could also do it up here under procedures, because that would be.
Yes, yes. Sorry?
No, we got, we got an answer. That's what counts. So, right now, if we, if we look at these categorized, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, which is good, good number to pick from. We want, five years will go by very fast. And even though if we try our hardest to work through all of these, we wouldn't probably get six done. So what we need to kind of do is identify what are the top three to four to focus on. So I'm happy to do this a number of ways. We could do it, you know, everyone vote, and we submit those in and we count them up, we can go around to each one, and if anyone wants to say, you know, an initial yay or nay, or reason why we wouldn't, or we should focus on one or the others, I'm happy to do that as well. We just have about 15 minutes left, so what do people think is gonna be?
I think we should talk, because otherwise we'll vote and then be stymied.
I was also gonna request that before we, you said there's like five or six up there? Do you mind repeating one, two, three, four, five?
Yeah, maybe. One is operations, right, basically? The first thing is operations, I would say.
Yeah, let's see.
I'm just trying to get a title.
No, that's good, you're right, Daria.
One is operation, two is connections, or communities, or connections.
Connection, that's great.
Three is education, right? Or, I don't know, maybe it was diversity or something? Diversify our commission, focus on.
This is the role.
Role, so that is identity, maybe?
Role's identity, that's a good idea.
This one is master plan.
We're all important.
Yeah, it's true. It's like, how do you pick?
So that is like, yeah, big, the big picture, I guess.
I was gonna say, art.
It's projects or programs or discrete tasks.
Art-focused.
Come on, Daria, what is this?
Yeah, the, I think actually, the first one was role, and the second one maybe is identity, actually, possibly.
I think six is like projects.
And six is, yeah, projects.
Six is projects?
Yeah. Maybe perhaps four is role, sorry, identity, and five is role. Is that possible? That four is identity?
I feel like.
Or is five identity and?
Five is, yeah, five is identity. Diversify the art.
Destiny. We can, we can maybe come up with a list.
Just to have a little bit of some titles, yeah.
I think having the numbers at least gives, lets us categorize them. Go ahead, Amanda.
Well, I'm just concerned with the time. If we just start talking, we're probably gonna talk and talk and talk. So I'm kind of in favor of voting.
Okay.
So one is operations and two is connections, is that right? And then three is education, huh?
Yeah, so you have operations, connections, education, role, identity, destination, and projects. I would, maybe one thing I will add to all of this is, when we're thinking about which ones to focus on first, nothing says we couldn't get going on some of these and, hey, wow, in three years, we've got a lot of these things already wrapped up. We wanna maybe come back and look at what we left off the table to see if we could bring it back. But think about what will have the most impact, you know, early on for the longest time. Some of these might be built off of other things we do. For example, our role and identity might get more worked out by making Oregon City a destination, location, and our diversity of our art assets and all of that. Or, you know, financials, of course, is helpful with all of these things, all these projects. So think about it in those terms, is kind of what I would say. Let's have a couple more minutes of talking, and we can go into the voting, if everyone's okay with that.
Where did the financial stability?
It's on the top.
It's a very, it's number one. Oh, operations, the financial stability, okay. I can.
Yeah, I think like, yeah, because one feels that, if you don't have that, nothing else works, so kind of seems important.
So, would it be weird to think that a master plan would go there too? Having trouble having it down at the other category?
Yeah, I feel like a master plan should be on the category. Sorry.
Or is ops, I mean, operation, a master plan should be part of ops. I mean, it's like the core foundation of everything else, right?
I might leave it there too. So the other thing to remember is that we have these big categories now, one through six. A master plan could go under a couple. So some of these objectives, these are kind of gonna start turning into objectives, and they could go under a number of them to make sure that we are still addressing them while not maybe everything under the one category. So if there are things like that, I'm happy to add them into other spots as well to still capture that objective, but ultimately under a different goal. Does that make sense to everyone?
Could you possibly reduce the font? Is it possible to see them all together?
Or just, can you make it bigger on this? Oh, I guess.
Oh, boy, yeah, no, thanks.
Well, now Rebecca is going, oh, hell no.
Also, like, one thing to note, perhaps, that number six, projects, to some degree, projects are kind of more towards objectives, like, you know, they can actually become objective of some of the goals, because they're projects, they're more objective than actual goals, right? So.
Okay, so.
I don't want to vote for other than the first one.
Yeah, I can see it loud. Now I'm like, I have no idea, there's like a bruh.
This could be over here, or it could be over here.
Well, so what we'll do after we identify these kind of couple or few categories is we'll go back, we'll wordsmith out the goals a bit to have everyone give something to edit off of, and then we'll start laying out the objectives underneath those. So, don't, I guess, these are good general things now, we can always discuss objectives a little bit more later. I wouldn't get tied to, if I don't vote for this number six, I'm not gonna get the things underneath there, because we can talk about that later.
Exactly, because I think they become objectives.
Don't get those two things tied together. So, any other comments on any of these or thoughts on any of these? I appreciate everyone coming like, really prepared, I was, I'm very, very happy. It's always hard to do goal planning and stuff, so I appreciate everyone putting the time in. Let me do this, this might help a little bit too.
Are we voting?
Well, I'm just waiting to see. Well, I'm just waiting to see if there's any other comments. Um if not, then we can do some voting.
I want a little more thinking, please.
Okay.
How do, are we gonna do the voting? Everyone picks the top three?
Everyone, let's say top four.
Top four, okay.
And then we'll, we can decide, you know, when we do that.
We have the top five, please?
Top six.
Um I'll pass these around for everyone who is online. So please can submit your your answers in.
I think like there's some of them are gonna become components of the others. They're all gonna happen, I think.
We're just gonna put them on a, on a, on a piece of paper and hand them in?
List them in in the order you would like.
Okay.
Here's to voting paper. So how are we gonna get our four remote?
Put it in the chat, put their numbers in the chat.
He's in the chat.
Okay, good.
Sorry, do you need?
No, I need to pack.
Are we putting them in the order of importance?
I think we're just writing on my.
Yeah, put them in order of importance.
Put your top four, not all six.
Oh, I wanna see.
Put your top four in the order of.
You'd be a magic man. Can we make that bigger?
No.
I can't see it.
Yes, hold on.
I don't know what I'm looking at.
Okay.
Okay.
All done.
I'll start at the top again.
Oh, thank.
I'm impressed.
Is that better, Joyce?
Yeah.
Okay.
Order of importance.
Order of importance.
What do we mean by importance?
Do you want me to tally?
I've got.
You got a tally?
Yeah. Yeah, pick your top.
There we go.
I'm, I'm, I'm worried about voter tampering.
Don't use the AI to to count. All right.
Oh, my goodness. Better without the glasses. I have terrible floaters.
You don't know floaters, lady.
Oh, boy. They're terrible right now.
Sweet.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And everybody, yeah, everybody's like, how do I, really, really, they're saying, how do you do this in mine? I would like to see one of these. Yeah, can you?
So all the subjects have got eyes. They all are. All the people that are science, whatever, they all are practicing.
You know, we're gonna finish this on time. Um, yeah. We, yes, we're getting close to that point. Um so I went through and what I basically did is because we're ranking it one through four, I associated a value to each ranking. So if it was the first one on your list, it got four points, three points, two points, one point. And then I went down and did a quick spreadsheet um and calculated it out. So this now gives us a ranking of all of them. So number one got the most points was operations. That seems to be the one that we all agree is critical. Thirteen points to connections, six points to education, sixteen points to role and identity, ten points to destination and five points to projects. So with this, the top, the top.
It was all in the same row of what we. Is it the same order as what was that?
No, no, not one or two.
So education only got six, so when.
Oh, I'm not, okay.
Um so in order, it went one, operations, then role, identity for sixteen points, number four.
Okay.
And then uh connections thirteen points and then destination ten points. So that's, that's the order of the top four.
Yep.
So what we will do now is I will take this offline. I'll put together some proposed language based on our conversation. It's easier, I feel, to wordsmith than it is to try and create things directly in a meeting. So at our next meeting, we'll come back, we'll have these listed out. I'll keep the notes so that we can reference those as well. But um everyone, uh we can then start working through kind of our um final wording for the goals and identifying the specific objectives that would uh need to be completed to achieve those goals in our eyes. Any other questions on the strategic process?
Okay, one more time. Operations, role, identity, connections and destination.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And so I will stop sharing. Um and I think next up on the agenda is municipal codes. So I can, I go first real quick on the mural code. Uh I did send it over to James and James was sharing it with legal counsel to get their feedback on. Uh we reviewed it a couple of times now. I don't know if people want me to bring it up, but the only change since the last time we reviewed it was I removed the piece about um uh us needing to or the the um clarification that we could do public art on public space with public funds without having to go through the mural process. Because legal counsel clarified that that is per the current law already allowed. So that piece has been removed, um but the rest of the changes stay as, you know, they've been presented the last couple of times. Uh does, do people want me to bring it up and go through that? Are we comfortable with where we were with the mural changes, which was essentially kind of clarifying a few points around restorations? And then also uh trying to give us a little more flexibility in terms of types of murals. So intersection murals, uh wall murals and roof murals. Um and I think there's a little bit of other cleanup that we did, but I'm happy to bring those up and review those. I think I would prefer to focus more on the stuff that Daria's been working on because that, there's lots of things in there and it's important work. But yeah, thoughts, comments, questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
Um when you said that change, are you talking about, hang on, on page, wait, uh number twelve? Is that what you're talking about?
Number twelve, yep.
That's been removed.
That section's been removed um per the feedback from legal counsel that we wouldn't need that clarification in there.
Okay, great.
I had, I had a question.
Yeah.
Um and I don't know if we need to have a little discussion about it, but the idea in number eight, materials that are mechanically reproduced or computer generated and then printed and then attached to a wall. I'm, I'm wondering if that's um that, if we want to talk about that anymore. I mean, I think um in, in other words, it's saying people that you can't paint it on place. You can, if you painted it someplace else and then brought it in, is that not gonna be allowed? Um and then saying things that are computer generated, um I mean, you know, even within our art for every heart submissions, two of those kids just did it on their laptop. So I, I don't think we can exclude computer generation or we need to define it more. I mean, artists create paintings and paint on their computers all the time. And like I said, you know, middle schoolers are doing it and we got it in our art submissions. So I, I wonder if there needs to be a little more thought to saying, if it's, you know, if you, if you, if you generated your art piece in a computer, we don't want to include it in a public art mural, I think might be problematic.
Maybe, maybe does it mean AI generated or?
Well, so this is, the, the original text for that section was, um and this was in the code as it currently stands, as it's currently approved. The mural proposal is not mechanically, wait, the mural proposal is not um mechanically reproduced or computer generated and printed on a base to be attached to the wall such as or by way of illustration or not limitation of images digitally printed on vinyl. So I think what this is saying is you can't just print us like a vinyl screen and then like paste it to the wall as a mural. That was what was in the original text. My, all the changes I made were just to try and help clarify the language a little bit because it was a little odd how, when I first read it.
Well, number, number eight was intended, I wrote it. Number eight was intended to have what we call pure art. Not art that is, you can, you can, you can actually create some type of, as you said, some type of vinyl, go to a store and create a vinyl sign and then put it up and call that a mural. And that's not what is intended here. We, we're talking about people who have actually put in the imagination, the sweat, contemplation to create something that reflects their energy.
Yeah.
And not a machine.
So AI generated would be out.
On place is what you're saying.
But, but I, 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 to Anne's point, and the language does sound like, so I do paint on my iPad often. And if I was commissioned to do mural, um and I have limited budget and limited time, I would say doing a um, making a painting on my uh, my, my iPad and then printing it out. And even possibly doing a vinyl wrap like we used for the mu, for the bathroom so that it would have longevity would be a wonderful option. And I don't want the language, I understand what you're saying. We don't want somebody to be like, you know, eat it else. Oh, look, it's a mural. You know, like, I totally, I, I understand that's what you guys are avoiding, but I think the language does indicate like, what if artists came with this project? And the building owner wanted it or whatever and that, and then because of the way the municipal code, code is written, they're like, oh, yeah, but you have to it basically makes it sound like you have to paint it on hand. Paint it by hand onto the building.
I understand what you're saying in terms of what you do. But in terms of what in terms of what's, what the city is expecting is maybe something different than what you do. And so um there are lots of, there are lots of ways to do this. But I think the focus really is on um, it's kind of hard, the words don't come to me, but, but originality. Something that is very physically um generated. Uh that's, I, that's what the intent of it, just because you do it doesn't mean the city wants to do it. That's the, I guess, that's the.
Yeah, yeah, I, I hear you. My, my point is, so if you look at the, the, the um, the, the Portland Lou where there's a beautiful painting and it is printed out on a vinyl wrap, that is obviously an original painting, that is obviously, and murals can be done that way. And honestly, there might be more longevity for it to be printed out on metal and then uh adhered to a building. I'm saying in the code later on, it would, that, that verbiage makes it sound like, oh, you can't do that. You need to paint it onto the building by hand. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Right, I just don't wanna restrict ourselves too much. And like you said, the way the, the Lou was generated is of a vinyl wrap.
Yeah, it would, it would fall into that.
Lou, technically, we never approved it as a mural either. So it should have been probably approved as a mural, but we never approved it as a mural.
Yeah, but I'm just saying if somebody came and they're like, because of cost, because of whatever, like the wall um over by the furniture store that is just deteriorating, if we wanted to put a mural up there, maybe we would want to print it on something and, and cover the wall up.
So I mean.
You know.
I think that there are two parallel thing. One is the, the means by which you create the artwork. Is that an original contribution or you just like use AI, for instance, to create foundation then? And then you paint it directly on the wall, but it's not even original. So that's one thing. How you, did you create the artwork? And the other one is how do you produce, physically produce the artwork? Do you put it on a vinyl wrap? Do you put it on a sheet or maybe it's a mosaic?
Yeah.
It could be many, many substrates, right? And so I think the language should, should enable all those ways.
Well, and also, and also to your point about like, well, does the city want that? I guarantee you, you have seen paintings that have been done on a computer by an artist's hand and you cannot tell that they've been done on the computer. I guarantee it. They're like beautiful stuff. Like you wouldn't be, you would think, oh, that was just something somebody painted.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe the verbiage can talk about AI, maybe it could say commercial.
Yeah.
I think putting the word commercial art and that would indicate like logos and branding and stuff that you were talking about, like avoiding.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be an original work of art, like.
Putting the language should be original, original.
We, yeah, we can modify, maybe what would be easiest at this point is to put in there that any kind of art that is um created uh, you know, using computer and then printed on material, the uh adhered to a wall um would be, uh need to be reviewed on a case by case basis. And then offline, we could do a procedure for how we want to do it. So we meet the needs of the city where we don't have that situation. But in unique cases, you know, things are changing all the time and there might be a case in the future where it makes sense to do it. But we can define it more outside of the code in a, in a, you know, procedures that we follow, the policy that we follow. I mean, does that work for everyone to kind of do it that way versus trying to address it in the code directly?
Would that um be inclusive of artists that decide to do murals on walls? There are slightly mixed media. So for instance, there is a lot of different type of artists that do a combination of um painted on the wall, but then they insert elements that are more three dimensional. So like I think, and they are still considered murals, it's just that they have a different incorporation. So I would like to ensure that we don't create language that excludes potentially amazing work of art just because we give the impression that it can only be painted.
Well, so in the mural code, it does state that they, they can do three dimensional on the wall.
Good.
So yeah, that is an option.
Okay.
Um for this one, yeah, I think what, you were really just trying to get away from some guy who's not an artist at all or doesn't consider themselves an artist going on ChatGPT, getting a design like, yeah, this'll do it and then giving a printer, print it out and then.
And slapping on the wall. Even to the point of taking, take, if they can get away with it. Taking, uh, taking the logo, taking the logo of Coca-Cola. And changing it so they won't get sued. But still, it's a logo of a brand. And classy.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
You don't want that.
I think number six does prohibit three dimensional structural elements. Number six says no public art mural shall contain electrical components, three dimensional structural elements or employ electrical lights.
So there you go, you cannot have.
So.
What is structural? I think what you're thinking of is like if there were tiles.
There could be tiles, there could be, you know, objects that protrude, you know. They're not structural, they're more kind of.
Artistic elements.
Yeah, elements that get embedded, right?
Structural, so.
Structure is more kind of maybe supportive.
Okay, so uh you're okay with that language in number six?
I mean, if we buy structural, it's kind of can be interpreted in different ways. If we buy in structure, we, we, we look at it as the word structural as architecturally speaking, yes, then definitely fine. But if we mean structural as in three dimensional, then not fine.
No, well, this, this, structure is structural.
I think it's structural.
Yeah, no, that's a structure.
She's saying she doesn't want to prohibit three dimensional structural elements and I'm asking.
No, well, they're two different things. Three dimensional structures, in my mind, they're two different things, but I don't know how we mean it here.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, you said, I think allows for that.
It allows for that.
I think of like uh the mural in Portland where the, there's a plant coming out of the wall.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah, that one's nice hair.
Yeah, that would be cool. All right.
I think that would be fine, but that's not structural.
Well, that is kind of structural because there is a thing that will do so much that it's got a structure that could come down, right? It's not a little thing. Yeah, so that's what I mean, you know, like we don't want to curb creativity because that would be a mistake, right? In the long term in particular, so we need to be careful with that.
Of course, we want to stay with the content.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
But the case by case, I think is wonderful, having that language.
I think, yeah, we could do that and, and address it through a policy or.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we're not, we're giving ourselves the most flexibility. Because we can't possibly think of every potential thing in the future.
Right.
If we could, we could make a lot of money.
Holograms.
Legal counsel uh has just got back with me on, on some of these recommendations. And um, um, one of the things that she pointed out was number two on the code where it says alterations to an approved and or installed public art mural must receive approval by a designed governing body for the arts commission.
I think that language is originally in there. I think that language is originally in there.
So that's the wrong one.
My computer died, so I have to try and get this out of memory.
So, no, it's actually, um, okay, this has some patterns to do with number one. And it's kind of midway, if the, it says if the building owner requests termination. Prior to the renewal date, the public art mural shall be removed. At the building owner's cost. And the city owner, and the city and owner will agree to terminate the easement. Um, so the other question I think she's saying here is she says, she says, the council says. If the, she's basically, she's saying, does this imply that if the building owner keeps the mural for the term? They don't have to cover the cost?
Oh, no, that wasn't the intention. So the cover the cost was, um, actually in there. What I had done there was, right now we have it, so every five years they have to renew the easement with us. And I flipped it to say, the easement will continue on every five years and there'll be a renewal date. If they want to cancel at the next end of the term, they can, they have to come to us and say it. That way we're not chasing all these people down every so, every five years. Cause as we build up our murals, there could be a lot of, of follow-up needed to get all this stuff done, so.
But who pays for it?
But it would be the business owner to, to pay for it if they ever wanted to take it down. Just like they have to pay for it per the easement if it ever got damaged. They have to pay to have it restored to what it was.
What if at the end of the five year period, they're saying, okay, we're done, we don't want it, who pays then?
They pay, they pay.
They're always gonna pay.
They're always gonna pay. Yeah, cause I mean, that's, that's how it currently is. All that I changed in the text was that instead of. The term automatic, the thing automatically getting a five years, because that's right now how it is, is at the end of five years, they have to pay to take it down. And unless they get the easement signed again. So for example, the, uh, friends of the library, they were one of the first murals we did. They're coming up on five years. At that five year mark, they're gonna have to tear it down if, if they can't get the business of, the building owner to re-sign the easement. And he will probably keep them responsible for paying for the, the removal of it, because whatever deal they worked out, but.
So I think with legal counsel really saying here is that, that's fine, but more clarification.
Yeah.
On that, on that question. To make it clear that it's still their cost.
Clarify who pays.
Right.
That's always a good thing to know.
Do we also want to clarify if a building owner does intend to take the mural down at the end of the five year easement, that they notify the city? Cause I know in some.
Yeah, so that's, that, the, what James was reading there is, uh, as they're approaching that five years, say that they're four and a half years and they say, hey, yeah, we're not gonna renew this next year. We're just letting you know. So in six months' time, they, uh, would have to have, they have to remove it.
You, you know, it doesn't hurt to keep a log of all the murals going forward. I, with the timing, so that, so that you know, where, cause, cause.
Yeah.
Build, because, because business owners come and go.
Yeah.
Building owners come and go.
Yep.
And so you can lose track of timing of everything.
And who you post a con, yeah, no, I totally agree. Uh, Rebecca has been working on a large, uh, spreadsheet of. Inventoring of all the, um, art in Oregon City, the murals of one of those. We can add that, that'd probably be an easy add there to. Record and, and track and we could share it out with people, um, so we know which ones are coming up. Because yeah, um, I think the first one actually we did was the art, uh, Friends of the Arts, but we have all these others that we have to probably go back and. Figure out, when did we approve these and when's their five year clock up? With this change, that's gonna go, it should retroactivate that and say, okay, nope, you are good to go unless you tell us you don't want it anymore.
Yeah, but don't go too far back, just the ones that you, just the ones you've, you've approved.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, yes, correct, correct. Not the ones that are there and have been there for as long as I've been around.
Exactly. So that's, I think that was, there was another comment counsel commented on, um. She was referring to, uh, number two A. Uh, where she says, where it says alteration shall be defined as a substantial change. Or modification made to a public art mural that has been reviewed and, and so, and so designated. So she says, uh, the degree of modifying terms substantial. Is not clear here. I'm not sure that it is necessary, given the exceptions that include minor repairs, routine maintenance. Slight deviation and replication. If substantial means some, some significant amount, that term should be defined.
Okay, so her recommendation would be, if we don't get defined substantial, the other stuff will give us enough to finish. Okay, so that could be removed. Okay.
There was one other comment that she made regarding two A four. Where she says replication of identi, of an identical, of identical public art mural made necessary. Because of replacement, repair or renovation of the exterior wall, which the public art is displayed. On, displayed, displayed period. I guess what the comment here is, why are these qualifiers necessary? Uh, if the underlying wall needs repair, replacement or renovation, then I, then an identical mural can be installed within three years. I don't, so she's saying, I don't see the significance of the, of the quote unquote damage code enforcement or safety concerns qualified.
So I think the thinking there was that if, if say a wall was hit, struck by a vehicle and there was a mural on that wall. And that wall had to be taken down and rebuilt because it was no longer structurally sound. Or they determined that wall was not earthquake, um, up to code. So they wanted to take it down and repair and make it sure it was up to, you know, safety wise. And there was a mural. Um, as long as they re-put the mural back up within three years, I'm not sure how long it would take to do some of these, you know, rebuilds of the walls. But, um, and it's the exact same mural, it wouldn't require going through the process again, is what I was trying to. Identify or define out there. So an example with the mountain, um. Mount Ogal one we just did, that one would have qualified for not necessarily needing mural approval. Again, because it was taken off and then reapplied within three years, because they renovated the building, painted over it all. And then the owner found out that it was removed and had came back and wanted to do it and he had to go through the whole process again. And I think in a, in a business owner's sense of mind there, I feel like if I'm already coming back to put the mural back. As it was before, because I'm trying to make my building safer for my tenants or my people living in it. Getting tacked on another, you know, process of having to do this all again to get the easement back in force is cumbersome. So.
And then, um. Her last comment has to deal with, well, her last comment has to deal with, uh, three A approved zoning districts include.
So I think part of the reason we changed that was I, having the districts defined out. Um, in the commercial area would limit us being able to do like an intersection mural in neighborhoods. That's residential.
She says that all street intersections are, all street intersections are included. Within city-based zoning designation, so I don't see that this list would need expansion.
Okay. Yeah.
That's an interesting comment.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So I can.
And then, and that's that.
Okay, I can, I can make these changes. I'll send it back to Anne and she can share them out with everyone to have a look at. Jim will share with you again too, so, uh, you can share with Leo counsel, make sure she has final, okay, blessing. Awesome. Okay, we've got a little over a half an hour. Uh, Daria.
Well, I don't have much to say. I just have to listen. Just listen, because I already spoke about this several times. I'm kind of curious to hear. Given the now two months that passed since I was last meeting, like if folks had a chance to read those documents, if they have feedback.
Yeah, has there been any other changes to it since the last time you reviewed it?
I, 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 we basically last meeting that we had, I took all the notes, implemented them. I send it to all of you actually, saying this is the new version. Which incorporates your feedback. That's all I've done. I didn't touch it since then.
Okay. Anne, would it be possible for you to bring it up? My computer went dead on me, so.
Sure.
If you can display it, we'll just really quickly go through it.
Which one do you want to do? The municipal code or the bylaws?
Do, uh, no, municipal code. The bylaws don't require approval by the city commission right now, so. We have that October seventh meeting with them.
I agree. Yeah, let's do that. It's also quicker and shorter.
The bylaws we can approve on our own later.
And that one didn't really have almost any change, like, you know, like it was the one that we did together with, with James. And I think after our meeting, maybe I, I changed one, you know, I amended it based on our discussion, one thing, but it was very little. That I recall. I haven't looked at it for two months, so. No, two months, maybe a month and a half, but. It's just not seeming, I guess.
I'm actually not on, my computer's not on the Zoom. Usually I'm on the Zoom, but this time it's the. I'm gonna, Rebecca, if I send you the link, will you display it?
Cause you want me to share my screens?
Yeah, well, it, um.
Logged into the.
Normally when I, when we participate at, at city hall, I'm already logged into the computer as part of the Zoom, but right now, the Lament Falls is hosting the Zoom. So, um, since you're already logged into Zoom, I'm just gonna send you the link in the chat and if you could, um, display it, that'd be.
Oh, yeah, for sure. I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Feel better, Rebecca.
Thank you. I know, I'm so annoyed. Alright, uh.
Actually, yeah, I can't put it in the chat.
Rebecca, do you still have access to the, to the Google Docs version that?
I do. Uh, let me see. I think I have the old version though.
Um, the other option is Daria, Daria had emailed out.
I'm sorry, I heard three different voices. What?
The one in the, the, the folder, I mean, I don't know which one you're looking at actually, so I shouldn't say anything. I have no idea what you're looking at.
I'm gonna go over to. Is it the one that says, uh, municipal code four twenty-five redlined?
Yep, that's the one.
Okay. You see it?
It's starting to come up. There we go.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Yeah, um, so I don't know, Daria, if you wanna go through and maybe just talk to the, kind of the high level points.
Well, if you can, please scroll down a bit, uh, because there's nothing like, it should show the, the changes, right? So everything is in red. What is in black is what I was originally. So the red ones are the things that have been either added or modified, basically. Um, so in this case, you can see for instance, annual report was not there, I believe, and so it's been added. Uh, powers and authority perhaps wasn't there also. Maybe we just re-phrased it, we renamed it with a different title. But if you can go down, please. Um, and so here you see different colors, obviously, because of multiple people that went through it. But, uh, basically what you have to look at is what is, hasn't been canceled, right? So here you can see that we remodified the language. We discussed this last time, the, the language. And if you remember, we had a very long discussion about that part that, that is in light green. And what we resolved the last meeting is that instead of putting three of these or four of that, because we have, you know, the option that they are commissioned. Maybe nine member or seven members, right? So because of that, based on that, I, minimum of five and maximum of nine members. Uh, because of that, I put then sixty percent, that's what we discussed last time, sixty percent being, uh, within the city limits.
See, now I've been listening to an attorney, they get in your head, um, approximately. Sort of makes that really.
Maybe we take off approximately. Well, I think that we discussed putting approximately because we, we felt that. It had to be at least sixty percent.
So put at least.
Maybe put at least.
Because otherwise somebody's gonna say, well, thirty is close, is approximately sixty.
What lawyers you've been talking to?
We were just listening.
And so like that was a consequence of the fact that A1 change was to say, you know, we can have as, as little as five people. And as big as nine members, but then because of that, we had to modify and we had a discussion about having a minimum. A minimum of members within the city limits and a minimum of members with expertise in any type of art form, right? That's what we discussed from performing arts, visual arts, interior arts, et cetera, et cetera. So that's one change. Because before was very much attached to the notion of maybe nine members, right, only, but we discussed actually that we might want to in some cases. If there's not enough people, have less members versus having nine members at any cost, they are not the right quality members, basically.
You said instead of approximately to say.
At least.
At least, at least, yeah.
There's two approximately there.
So remove approximately, put at least. Uh, then if you can, please go down, let me think.
Just a quick.
Am I supposed to type in here?
I'll take care of it. I don't even think you've got actually rights to change it. And then, um. Here, the, the, you know, the officers in, in wording, um, you, you know, is not really, um. Super changed, but basically I adjusted a bit based on our discussion. And so basically it says that every year you have to, you know, annually kind of elect them. And they serve one year term, you can reelect them again the following year, but the idea here is that, you know, they have to apply or they have to, to. Kind of, um, um, you know, kind of volunteer to be elected. Um, and, and the idea also that they would not serve more than two consecutive terms. Because that gives the chance to multiple people to actually be able to serve in those positions. Um, but it's, that hasn't really changed. If we go down a bit.
And I guess a note there, maybe just so everyone's on the same page, that would be our objective, would be to try and. Give people an opportunity to come off and go back on or whatever you're on the. It's ultimately up to the mayor. If someone applied, ultimately the decision with the mayor too.
Yeah, that's, that's for the chair and vice chair, eh? That's not to elect. So if you go back up, there is actually chair and vice chair position. So that officers thing is the chair and the vice chairs. And so it was the same before, you know, it just has been modified in the language to make it a little bit cleaner. Because it was kind of a bit messy, but it's the same as it was before. Every year, the chair and vice chair need to be reelected. You start with the, you know, people say, I would like to put my hat in the ring, I wouldn't not, you know, and then you start. You say, I want to put my hat in the ring for the chair versus the vice chair, and then you e- elect first one and then the other, right? And so it's the same thing as before.
But you do it in an orderly way.
Correct. And you know, the bylaws has got more, the protocols are not to do it. This is just saying, every year you should elect them. They can serve a maximum two years in a row. So you know, for instance, if you Josh next year want to be chair again, you can. But if you were to serve multiple years on the commission, you wouldn't do more than two years in a row as a chair. Because you want to have multiple people to have that opportunity, basically.
What do you do in a scenario where no one else wants to apply for it?
Well, then, you know, maybe you, you kind of have to die. But the reality is always new people moving around, right?
True.
Yeah.
The only thing I worry about is, do we get ourselves in a pinch because it's in the code versus a policy or in our bylaws?
It was before like that too, eh? I didn't edit.
The officers thing was all in there like that?
It was already there before, yeah. So I mean, it's not really changed. It changes how it's written because.
She just, she just made it so that you could read it better, because this was really hard to understand.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that is because by, we must leave. Red, this document has to be left redlined.
Yeah.
Hey, so we cannot, I cannot, I know it's very hard to read, but you, it has to remain redlined for the art, for the commissioners. We must leave it like that, so it has to be like that, it's difficult to read, but that's how it has to be delivered to the commission, because they need to see what we are amending, basically.
So.
And then when they, when they get it, when they, they'll have the red line, right?
And they also have the other version.
They'll have a clean version, yeah.
Correct, correct, so um so this is then, um, so here it's been changed, because what we did, we said, you know, it can also be as little as five people, right? So then here is the quorum is telling you, like, if you are five people, there have to be at least three people, that is like obvious stuff.
I'm uncomfortable with this, because like it's not five people, and why don't we just state what a quorum is?
You wanna just say simple majority?
Uh, we can, um, however, James Halmea, because I think that when we reviewed, you know, whole this change was the five, you know, basically adding the addendum for the five, but what it says, a quorum shall be necessary for action by the arts commission, that's the first sentence, right? That's the quorum, and then it basically, the second point, it was added after our conversation, because folks in the team said that it was too generic and we needed to be specific about how many people, if we have a group of five people. I have no problem removing the sentence, because I think when you say quorum shall be necessary, seems pretty obvious to me what a quorum means.
Well, Robert's rules, Robert's rules would define a quorum as a simple majority unless specifically stated as a super majority necessary.
Define what a quorum is.
So I think just saying the first line and removing the light green would be fine.
It's fine, right, okay, okay, so then we remove that green sentence, the arts commission.
Does that make sense?
And.
But no, it totally makes sense, I don't see where it would hurt to put a simple majority somewhere, in parentheses after quorum, a simple majority?
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
So basically, we put a quorum, brackets, simple majority.
There you go.
And then we remove the second green sentence, correct?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so, um, that's it, the annual report actually was just a wording, we just removed, we put annual report and we took off yearly.
I will, I I don't mind leaving it like this, I will say, we have to remember, they like it in writing, uh something I learned this last year.
That's true, you got taken down.
They like it in writing, not just a presentation.
Okay, so should we put in writing?
A written annual report?
No, not nothing, no, nothing, you don't have to put that in here, don't change anything, I'm just reliving that that uh scenario.
Not here. No, that's not changing.
The trauma.
Right, because like when we met with James, et cetera, the idea was that to, the this one, the municipal code, we should try not to keep it a bit generic and high level, because change happens, right? So if you put in writing, then it has to be in writing, so we have to leave it like that, voting, um, uh, there's nothing yet that really changed, actually. So I'm just looking through what is actually worth discussing.
Yeah, hang on, because I don't.
The term bimonthly, we should put like every two months.
Every two months?
Parenthesis.
Okay, well, that was how it was before, so you know, we tried this, so like here's the thing, when we met, the recommendation that I was given is to change as little as possible.
Understood, I think defining that term, because bimonthly could be twice a month, which.
But I have no problem changing a lot.
Right.
We don't wanna do that, so.
No, so let's put at least uh every two months, okay?
Every two months.
And I don't understand the second part, it just, it's like a dangling, and may hold a special meeting of the arts commission, what is, what are you saying?
And may hold a special meeting, arts commission shall hold an official meeting at least by Monday, and may hold a special meeting on what we are having today.
Anytime. Yeah, so it goes to this next sentence, so it says, a special meeting of the arts commission, and I think that's supposed to be a little A, any, oh, any items?
No, that's any item must be approved by a simple majority, voting members present at a meeting, like did as, was like that and has been moved.
Okay.
What I would do is I'd put a period at the end of bimonthly, and then say, arts commissioners may hold a special meeting if needed.
Or every single month. Occasionally, if needed, sure.
Well, sure, I guess the question, do we need to say that at all?
Maybe not.
Yeah, cause that's part of the co- that's part of the commi- committee manual, so we can do that.
I mean, we can decide to do special meetings without having, so let's remove it.
This is just saying, at a minimum, we have to be meeting every two months.
So let's do, the arts commission shall hold an official meeting at least eh every two months, that's it.
Every two months.
Yeah, and just leave it at that.
So we're gonna take that off?
The second part, yes, and.
Alright, yeah, that makes sense, great.
Uh, okay, make it time to establish the governance.
Maybe you can say the voting members present. Any item?
Uh, no, that, any item must be approved by a simple majority of the voting member present at a meeting to pass, so anything we discuss has to be basically approved by a simple majority.
Was that there before?
Yes, that was, I was recent before.
That's.
It implies a simple majority of the voting members present at a meeting.
How about any vote taken? Because I, any item, what item, agenda item?
I don't know.
Well, like, yeah, I mean, it could be a number of things that you're approving, any item.
So just say any vote taken must be approved by a simple majority.
Cause it can. And or any decision that requires, um, um, any decision must be approved by a simple majority of the voting members present at a meeting to pass, unless otherwise provided.
But then the decision could be to like sit somewhere else, I mean.
I mean, that could be a, but.
I just, anything, any voted, anything voted on.
Yeah, I I don't mind doing, any item uh requiring of, must be, must be approved by a simple majority of the voting members present at a, and I would say, a court meeting to pass.
Required in voting, requiring of voting.
Because if you don't have quorum, you could still have a majority of the voting members there to pass it.
That's right, you should say quorum.
Look at you, being all smart, yes.
That's exactly right, you should, you should remove the, you should remove the word present, because if if.
Um, so we're gonna put, any items required on voting must be approved by a simple majority of the voting members.
Well, a simple major, how did you say it, Josh, of the quorum?
Uh, a simple majority of the voting members present at a court, so court meeting would be a meeting that has reached quorum.
Court?
Court, Q U O R A T E, court.
Have you guys ever heard that? No.
I'm just, I mean, I I were saying that, I mean, like, so you have to have at least, um, it can't just be, so you have a nine-member commission, but if only five people show up, you don't have, if only four people show up, you don't have a quorum.
Yeah, you have a quorum, only four people show up, yeah, but you can still have a simple majority of those four people that showed up.
You don't have a quorum, so you can't say.
He's, he's right.
That could approve it.
Cora, people, cora.
What is the word, how did you say, Josh?
Uh, I can, I can go back in here and update it.
Okay.
It does.
I kinda wish I could speak, speak Klingon.
I kinda wish you could too.
I'm terrible with languages, I'm, I drive hard.
Okay, so it says, point B. Okay, that one is something that we discussed, and then the green part is what I changed based on the discussion from the last meeting.
Are you talking about B?
Uh, yeah, B.
Where are we?
Go, lower down, lower down.
Who is the charge of this? Oh, Rebecca, oh, poor Rebecca.
Uh, Rebecca, yeah, B.
Oh, you're talking about B now.
So the green, light green part is, okay, stop, stop.
Right there.
Green part is what was edited, in fact, that one, I think I edited real time as we were talking perhaps. Um, Kungui de local region economy is supporting the arts.
Oh, Gramming, thank you for getting rid of demonstration.
Mhm, and programing. Well, it was already there, actually, so the commission shall promote the arts in Oregon City to enrich the life of its citizens through public art, education, and programming, full stop. The promotion will contribute to the local and regional economy by supporting artists, after-related organizations, and businesses, and supporting tourism attract- attraction efforts. It should be actually comma after organizations.
I don't know if that last part is necessary, I mean, that's our goal, yes, but putting in the code means that if we don't do that with the program, if it doesn't hit all of those items, then we shouldn't be doing it.
So I took it off the end.
Yeah, and businesses. Right.
Yeah.
So comma after organizations and businesses, period.
Well, I would almost, almost just remove all of that, cause hopefully, we're doing that.
The whole sentence, this promotion.
This promotion forward, I, if you don't have that in there, then it's.
But it's fine with me, that's what you guys discussed and asked to add last time.
All that this, all that would be here then would be the commission shall promote the arts in Oregon City to enrich the lives of its citizens through public art, education, and programming.
And program.
The rest of that, underneath it, would all be removed, not needed, cause otherwise, it's holding us accountable to that, and I don't know if we could achieve that and everything.
Not needed, alright, okay.
It's too specific.
Yeah, so let's remove it, good, because it was added last time, so now we take it off again, um, and then, which is, um, now D, let me check one second, D. May, so this has may, not shall, right? May include, so that it says what we may do, right? Which I think is good, because we do want to put something there in the code in terms of what we were talking earlier about asserting a role, um. So that's really more about our role.
My English teacher would say they all need to be ending in ing, so you're providing, preserving, and then preserving, should be that last sentence.
No, no, because he's providing connection with other local, national, regional, and national organization, working for the benefits of arts and preservation, or it is like attached to the previous, yeah.
Oh, I see. Okay, okay.
They're working for that and that.
That's a long sentence.
It is, it really is.
Daria's like, correct, okay.
Well, James is, James is still contemplating it.
Yeah, because you can be, make, understand, this is the municipal code.
Yeah.
And not, um, not a manual. So the commission's duties may include planning and executing public displays of visual and performing arts, preserving and enhancing the city's existing public art, providing con- this is where it gets.
Yeah.
Provide, providing connection, connection with other local, regional, and national.
It's basically three things, okay, so one is planning, executing, public display of in 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 visual arts, one is one, so one is planning, executing arts, the one is preserving and enhancing existing art, so one is doing new art. The second one is preserving the existing one, and the third one is connecting with organization, those are the three points in that sentence, really.
Right, exactly, so what I'm basically saying is that you probably just need a period after the city's existing public art, period.
Or you can put a semicolon, right, you can do, commission duty may include, uh, column, planning and executing public displays of visual performing arts, semicolon, preserving and enhancing the city's existing public art, semicolon. Providing connection with other locals, region, and national organizations, and I think honestly, I would get off, get, take off, working for the benefits of art and preservation, blah, 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 blah.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah. Just make them regional and national arts organizations.
Organization, full stop, remove the rest.
No, but put arts in front of.
Remove that, yeah.
Yes.
Remove that, mm, and put the the column in city common to just separate the three topics.
Okay, but again, add arts to the local, regional, and national, between national and organizations should be arts.
Rebecca, we can address this offline too, don't feel like you have to do editing on here, but yeah.
Yes, yes. No, you don't have to do it, also, I don't think she can, because she doesn't have editing rights.
No, I can't, I just highlighted it, cause everybody was trying to figure out which one we were doing.
But you're taking notes, right? Okay, perfect, then I can amend it, if you give me the notes, okay.
I think that's a good correction.
My benefits, yeah, that one was just linguistic, okay, let me see A and B and C, these ones, there were changes based on last year, last time, uh, okay. So actually, in A, the first part was removed when I reviewed it with James, that was removed way back when, so that one hasn't been removed, no, changed since last time.
Great.
Then, like, the arts commission may review and recommend, those light purple were actually added afterwards, I think from our conversation.
Can you scroll back up real quick, Rebecca, to the number A? So the commission shall have the authority to empower to solicit funds or grants from individuals, corporations, other government agencies, such funds shall be possible, so. So we don't have the, I I I agree, we don't have the power to uh in independently incur financial construction, but does that, removing that, does that remove our our ability to like go for a grant from another government organization that's doing grants for art projects, like a national, federal?
No. Oh, I don't know.
Well, I think B, I don't think so.
No, that what it says is that we cannot do financial consideration on behalf of the city of Oregon City, right?
But aren't we a part of?
Independent.
We are part of Oregon City, though.
You're not independent.
Yeah, yeah, right, we are independent, so we cannot do things on their behalf without blessing.
Correct, we need to work through the city staff to do that, but by removing that, I, maybe it doesn't, because then it's just not spelled out at all, it's not saying we can't do it, it's just not in there.
Because it says independently, I think in that sentence, independently is the important word there, right?
Alright.
Well.
Independently, we need to have their approval and blessing.
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah, the arts commi- the arts commission in it, as, cause that's a, the art can't, the arts commission can't write a grant.
Yeah.
That's like the city commissioners writing a grant, they don't do that.
I'm not talking about us doing the grant, I'm talking about if the uh like, uh, Americans for the Arts.
Right.
Had a grant opportunity, and we wanted to apply for it to get it to do a project.
Mhm.
By removing that, I think I was equating it to, you're saying, no, we can't do that, but no, what you're saying is, we just can't do it without, um, and and, you know, signing an agreement with them, without going through city staff. The agreement would be with Oregon City, not the Oregon City Arts Commission.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, I think I was equating in my head to something.
Yeah.
More substantial than what it is, so, okay.
That's good, cancel.
The instance, the arts commission bees may review and recommend grant application or other expenditures within the scope of its mission, right? So we can, but has to be, you know, for the city manager or designate approval, so it has to be approved by the city.
Okay.
Yes, and that's, that was in the C below.
That was always before it just got moved and modified, uh, now, the the one in green, D, that one actually is being modified based, I think, on our conversation last time.
Wow, that's good, yeah.
The arts commission may seek and manage additional resources, so this is the point where we can seek additional resources to support its mission, other entities or individuals as approved. So basically, it says that we can seek additional resources, however, we need to be approved by the city for that to happen. And then, I remember that we had a discussion about adding the green, the light green sentence there, which is the same above, I was asked to add it also over there.
Yeah, I'm right there.
You may get into trouble with the word, the the arts commission may seek, uh, may, may seek, the the trouble you wanna get into is and manage, um, uh, you can seek additional resources. And that would be, of course, if you identify something, and that would, and and then you can seek it, and also staff helps you identify it as well, but uh you're not going to be able to, uh.
Well, I think what I manage, we mean like, so we, we, we got a grant funding for public art Oregon City. We would then oversee those funds to make sure they're applied to the project, we want them to be applied to within our budget, now, to your point, I think what you're saying is that we don't, managing it sounds more administrative, where we would, so.
But it says as approved, right, by the city manager, so there's always that thing attached, right, that says that we can manage, but it has to be approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, but I think if you could use a different word.
Oversee or.
Oversee or.
Oversee.
Budget or.
City men may seek, what do you say, the city men may seek additional res- why do you need to need it in the first place?
That's an interesting.
Well, because we want to also be able to sort of, kind of, decide what to do with the money, because otherwise, the money comes in and then it just comes, but we cannot decide what to do with it, I guess.
There's a lot of things implied here, as it is, I mean, as you, if you keep it here, if you just say that arts commission may seek additional resources to support its mission, and other entities or individuals, as approved by the city manager.
Um, I guess the other thing too, Jim, that we haven't really talked about, but could become a possibility, is what if we were to receive physical art um for our collection? So example, we received a statue from the Grand Ron tribe when we did the arch bridge, um, paintings and celebration, that is something where we were, you know, and it kinda, that should fall under the, um.
So they come, they come to the arts commission or they come?
It it came to the city, but I would say the city then, i- in cases like that, like where we got a, the city got a piece of art, I would assume that the city would want it to be under the arts commission's um asset log of public art, that, and it makes sure that it's managed and it's cataloged and it's referenced, right? Otherwise, it could just end up in someone's office somewhere, and no one knows where it happened to, and when they retire, they take it with them.
I, I think the word, yes. I think the word, the word oversee actually would work well, because it's basically implies that you seek funding or this type of, type of other funding, but also you oversee, you're responsible for the usage of it.
Could, can we put oversee in and see what legal counsel thinks about it, if it's necessary or not?
Instead of manage?
Well, yes, no, not manage, because only the city commission can receive art.
Correct.
I mean, only the city, only they can receive art, even if, and then they will turn it over to you to take care of it.
Yeah, exactly, and so we're overseeing that asset, is what I'm saying, we're, we're tied to responsible for making sure it's, it's recorded and that it's properly, you know, identified.
Exactly, it's really about overseeing. Maybe it may seek and take responsibility for, or oversees or takes responsibility for the use.
Jim, you're okay with the word oversee instead of manage?
Yeah, I I'd say oversee, but I.
Okay, I think he's agreeing.
Let's do oversee, yeah.
I'm, I'm agreeing with you, I'm agreeing with you, but I, I'm trying to help you not get so specific, uh, as the city commission. Uh, as the city commission says, oh, who are these people?
Well, but you know, also it's like, it's a balance, right, about.
If we throw so much at it, they might not even notice it.
Yes. That is probably what is gonna happen. Uh, okay.
That's a common tactic.
Letter E, like eh, point E is about the mural.
Okay, wait a minute. What what are, we we skipped more green. Let's not skip.
No, it's the same sentence as above.
Yeah, it's a re thing that the city manager makes.
Oh, got it. Okay, got it.
It's the same sentence, yeah. Then here we, okay, here we the the orange, sorry, the purple cutting was hap- happened when I reviewed with James and the city. And so put as an advisory, remove all the language. But then the green was added after our conversation, right, with budget and planning function. Right, because we felt that that was missing, which is true.
So E says the 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 arts commission shall regulate murals, yes, identified and.
I know, I was talking about A in policies, but okay. I was talking about A in policies because that one above.
I'm looking at the E just, that's no, I mean, one, I mean, that's not, that's not a change, is it?
Uh, yes, because it it was actually not mentioned. There was no no mention of the chapter of the mural. It was a kind of a generic.
Do we want to remember that one piece? Commission expenditure shall be subject to all provisions of law, including local, but I would think we'd want to keep that in there.
I was removed by
Oh, okay. If he removes, then I don't care.
By Jacob. Jacob asked to remove it because I thought it's, he felt they was gonna, if things change legally and things change in terms of administration, he might actually put us in a pickle.
Yeah, okay.
So now, A over there, the only thing that was changed based on our conversation is what's in green with budget and planning function was added.
Okay.
That's great.
Okay, we only have about three minutes left, so I think we're getting to the end.
It's the end.
That's great.
Now, now, did you bring the beers?
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, so in terms of the next steps with that, uh, we'll make Anne will share the notes with our, Darrell will make the change. I think we'll get it to Jim then to share with the council.
I'll do that, yeah.
Get the blessing of it.
So you send me notes, I amend, I send to James.
And we'll get that.
I send to James and CCU, Josh and Anna.
Sounds good.
And then we're done with that.
So at the next meeting, we'll go in and we'll officially approve the proposed changes to the code to go before the city commission for final approval.
Yeah.
Um, before our meeting. So, yeah.
Awesome. And then in next meeting, can we have on the agenda discussion about the bylaws, please?
Um, we talked about the agenda already. It's not on there because I just want to make sure we approve the municipal code and the strategy stuff, but because those are on the um agenda with the working session with the city commission.
Okay.
So I focused on that. Um, I'm trying to remember what else is on there. We have the salmon bench. We have to come back to the salmon bench discussion.
And then we also have um that Kathy Rowe is gonna talk about um the.
Updates the art assessment.
Yeah, she submitted a proposal for our consideration to update the um public art assessment.
It's a budget request.
Actually, that's on the agenda.
That's that's so for next week.
Yeah, 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 it's next.
The bylaws we will, we will for sure have on there um for would be October.
October. Okay, good. Maybe between now and then, all commissions could do me a favor to read the document.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can have a conversation, please.
Well, and and the municipal code, depending on where we end up with it, it could affect how we, what we do in the bylaws. So having that wrapped up first does help a little bit, could make things easier.
Yeah, I mean, the bylaws are written on top of
Yeah.
the municipal code. So there's nothing in the bylaws that goes against the municipal code.
So, and as you know, the municipal, the municipal code process will take a little while because you have to go through a public care.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, the other thing is um the meeting with, the joint meeting with the city commission on October seventh. You got two, it sounds like you got two items on the agenda. You got this that we just finished, and you've got.
The murals.
So the three things that I, I talked to Mary yesterday, we agreed on the agenda that, so we're gonna have the letter intent uh that we have with the project forty-three. Um, how, what is it? I think that's what it's called.
Well, I'm a corner worker, yes, yeah.
Um, the municipal code, which is the, I would say, the the big chunk of it, and then uh reviewing our goals and objectives, wherever we stand on that at that point, and asking them, the city commissioner at that point, what do they want to see? You know, these are we looking at in terms of what we want to focus on, what else do they want to see in their Oregon City art program or Oregon City art in general, like from us? So those were the things we were gonna talk about um on the agenda. And we have ninety minutes. They weren't able to give us the full two hours because of another item that is maybe not important but urgent, and so they have to deal with it, so.
So the the best way to handle this is the first one, with those three items, it's gonna go, you're gonna need staff report. And Anne will develop a staff report uh along with you so that you hit all the points and because staff report, finally, it's gonna ask the commission to do something.
Yeah.
But it helps frame the conversation, so they all need a staff.
Yeah, I know. Get it in writing.
Yeah, get it in writing.
And then municipal code, when you mentioned that, you mean the two documents, the mural and this municipal code?
Yep, those two. Uh, what is it? Two twenty-six and fifteen, twenty-eight, ninety?
Yes.
So the staff report has to be in by um
The week before.
The week before, so so.
So we got a couple of weeks.
Yeah, we got a couple. So the sooner the better you get the staff report finished and in the system, the better.
That's a couple of red bulls of a project that we're done.
Yeah, I mean, our deadline to have it submitted would be the twen- the thirtieth of October, the week before, but I think we can have it in the week of the twenty-second, so that's no problem.
Of September.
Of September, correct.
Perfect. Okay, well, we're a minute over. If there's no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting.